Oh, I didn't see you swear. Uh, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Monkey.
Here.
Treasurer Rice.
Here.
Trustee Bills.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Thering.
Here.
And Clerk Cody here.
Full compliment. With that, we'll move on to approval of agenda, item four on the agenda. Happy to entertain any motions.
I move to approve the agenda.
Support. Motion by Bill, support by Brown, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda passes unanimously. Item five on our agenda, presentations, and we're fortunate to have Commissioner Engler here this evening, and you have the floor.
Thank you, I'll start off with some of the good, good news, I know Trustee Smith covers our meetings pretty thoroughly, but today we had a rib cutting out at Herrick Park, so there's a brand new playground out there, so. So Herrick Park is one of the ones that I think could be improved, and it's, it's got a lot of improvement, Coldwater's fairly well full all the time, Herrick is popular, but it could be a little bit better, so. If you get a chance, get out there and look at it, it's kind of a unique design, it wasn't just a standard, so it was designed for the park, and it was got by a grant, so. The other good news, I'll start off with the good news, because I always like that, we got approved for the Public Defender Grant, everything we asked for, we got. Kudos to the Public Defender's Office and their staff. You know, that's the one that we get about eighty percent is funded by the state, so. It has caused us a little bit of problem, because the state mandated that we have to set salaries at a certain level, and it doesn't coincide with our prosecutor's office, so it kind of causes some problem with budgeting and trying to get everything fair in there, but. You know how grants are, if you don't, we've been lucky the last four years, we've gotten everything we asked for, but if we don't do what they want, you might not get everything you asked for, so. It's kind of a, one of those things that we kind of deal with. Clear up something, I know Trustee Smith will probably go into it, but I seen it on the best source of information on the internet, so. I want to clear up a little bit. During the board meeting, we did approve to go forward with an eleven million dollar bond. And that's just the start of the process, it does not mean we're going to spend that. We do got something in the budget, because that's the maximum, it's like, you're gonna go buy a house, you go to the banker, get the loan approved, then you look and see where to do. We hope we don't have to spend that kind of money, but that's the maximum, and then we did budget it, seven hundred fifty thousand, so. Hopefully, we're being over conservative, and we'll be able to cut that back, until we actually, the buildings are cleared out, we're actually getting ready to build maybe one, or maybe two floors, we don't know yet, so. In the long run, we can't continue to keep leasing out and borrowing. I know this township's been very generous for allowing us to have meetings here, it's been a good, very good location, and I appreciate the space you allow us to use, so. That going forward, and one last thing, I'll just make a comment on, and. As you know, the commissioners are not allowed to endorse millages out there, we're starting to see some signs out there, if you don't know on there. But I am allowed to kind of talk a little bit about philosophy, so I will go into there, and it's very, in my opinion, it's just my opinion alone, it's, it's not the board, but it's kind of, it's between. Kind of between we and me. And when I say that, and it sounds awful simplistic, but really, what we are looking for is a community, we're looking for good schools, we're looking for safety, we're looking for wide, good quality, we're looking for a community, you know, I've been in this community, uh. Family's been here since eighteen eighty, so I've been involved in a lot of stuff that, that brings back to the community, so we want a place where people will want to come to and not leave. You know, we go back to the me, and you know, I don't like paying taxes, I mean, I always wait the last second to pay my taxes. I also think property taxes is totally unfair for farmers, because we make our income off of the property, and it doesn't make a difference if we make a profit or not, we still have to pay the taxes, so. I do think there needs to be another, I don't think we need to get rid of property taxes, but I think there needs to be a way, either use tax or sales tax, to help supplement some of that. So having said that, I just think that when you say, I want more money in my wallet, I do too. But also, as a farmer, you're always thinking ahead, you're looking towards the future, you know, you want this community to be better with your involvement, so I do think that I want to be part of the we, where we work together to solve the problems there. I know it's a little simplistic, but it's, that's basically, you know, if the millage goes down, we will survive that too, but it will be very difficult, and we will lose total control what happens, at least part of the county, so. And I think I told you, I am foolish enough to run again, so. There will be, I do have a primary, and there will be a general, so I gotta work a couple hard, so, thank you.
I want to say, I want to say one thing, I'm really glad, I don't even know about this bond till you just said that, but I'm glad you guys did that, because I think that's a way to circumvent the problem that we're having with funding right now. And is that just for the building, or is that for some of your deficit?
This is just the renewal that we've had for twenty some years.
No, I mean the eleven million dollar bond.
Yeah, that's for the rebuild, you know, we've been doing a lot of budgetary stuff, you know, jail, you know, that's just about eighty percent. I'm hoping that will come under budget, if that, we got eight hundred thousand in contingency, that we shouldn't have to, we haven't had to do. You know, we're, hopefully, if we don't run into any problems, we're going to be pretty close to running into that, so that'll be in there, but. And the bond will be the rebuild now, if we rebuild one bill, one part, we don't need all the space, so we will hopefully maybe be able to lease out some of the. You know, there's some opportunities there to do that, but we really got to get everybody back, and. I mean, our staff has been really good at working together, but maybe too close together, because some of the places are really cramped, and it's just, it's difficult, and they've been really supportive, and the sad part is that some of them, you know, the millage does go down, we're still making cuts, but if the millage goes down, we'll have to make a lot more cuts, and.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's just, it's hard, so.
Thank you.
It's not a fun time.
Yeah, no.
So I'll take any more questions, if not, I'll. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I skipped the last one. That brings us to item six on our agenda, public hearings, we actually have one this evening, the Fox Meadow special assessment. This is one step of many. We as a board chose to hold this public hearing, just as a reminder, publish in the paper, and with that, at seven oh eight, we will open up the public hearing for the Fox Meadow special assessment. And so, if anybody watches this online later, and just a reminder, the board will also take this up, this is an opportunity for the public to ju- jump in if they want. Since you just walked in, I'm going to just restate it, we just opened a public hearing for the Fox Meadow special assessment, if you want to jump in on that. I'm not making you, I'm just letting you know that's where we're at. I'm assuming we have no one online? All right, so seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close the public hearing for the Fox Meadow special assessment at seven oh nine PM. That takes us to public comment, public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, we'll open up the public comment at seven oh nine PM. Still no one on, online?
Lori Rogers, Chute, Corry, Cornerstone Drive, Union Township, Michigan. I'm excited to be running, and I have a greater appreciation for all you guys, what you do. I'm learning and gonna keep learning and do my best, so I hope I learn that sheet someday. You can enjoy your retirement.
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
You get the squeaky chair.
She'll be giving it back.
Last call, last, last call on public comment. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment at seven ten PM. That brings us to reports, boards, and comments, or reports and board comments. Item A is current list of boards and commissions, we currently have two openings. Board review and planning commission, we do have an application for board review, just a note. I started shaking the bushes and found Mrs. Corbin. I didn't know her prior, but I was looking for someone that had some real estate background, she's a real estate broker, I, I, not a broker, an agent, maybe I should, how I should state it. And so I basically collected a list of real estate individuals in the township, and started shaking the bushes, and I had a great conversation with her, several conversations, actually. So I was pleased to see that she applied. But if somebody would feel moved to nominate her for the board review, I would like that, as a note, board review only meets a few times a year. This term would be ending at the end of this calendar year, twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to nominate Jeanette Corbin for the board review with the expiration date of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Take your pick!
Motion by Cody, support by y'all over here.
Rice.
I'll pick Rice. If there's no objections to that?
No.
We have a nomination by Cody to appoint Mrs. Corbin to the board review, twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, support by Rice. Any other discussion, does anybody here know her by chance?
No.
She happens to live in Scully. All, my only interactions were on the phone, and.
She dropped off her application on a motorcycle, so that's pretty cool.
Look forward to meeting her.
Look forward to meeting her. You could've told me that, I'd have made the nomination, right?
Any other discussion? Everybody clear in the motion? All of them favor of appointing Jeanette Corbin to the board review, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passed unanimously. Mr. Stool, will we make sure she gets the onboarding, I know you've already, you have that process down?
Yes, that's already in process, in fact, we'll reach out to Ms. Corbin tomorrow, and just while we're on the subject, I did receive what all consider written confirmation that Mr. Golden, who's an alternate on the board review, has resigned that position effective immediately, so we have that opening as well. And then all of the board review terms expire at the end of this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, I got a question, does that include Ms. Corbin at this time, she'll, she'll, we'll have to re-up her?
Twelve thirty-one.
Twelve thirty, okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's, uh, so, I, I know you said the rest of them, and that Randy has resigned, do we know if either the other two are planning to come back, or attempt to come back to be on the board?
I don't know that yet, we have confirmed that they'll be at the July sixteenth board review.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thanks.
I have an unrelated question.
Okay.
I thought we disbanded the Aquatic Recreational Authority, no?
That should be removed, I'll be removed next.
Oh.
Oh.
I was just curious. Yeah.
Okay. Moving, well, just a reminder, planning commission, planning commission, planning commission, and now another board review, but that would be an alternate seat at that point. July, or June, monthly activity report coming later. Planning commission, EDA and ZBA updates by Community and Economic Development Director, Mr. Nanny. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, we have a, a couple things, we have not had any activity of the zoning board appeals, been quiet on that front. Our EDA board did meet on the eighteenth of June, they had two items on their agenda, one was to, to look at the bids for the sidewalk project that, that we have going on in the East EDA District, this is a section of sidewalk going from East Pickard Road, M twenty, up to Jamison Park. They, they did look at the bids, there were three bidders, all three were local companies, they did select the low bidder, which was Malley Construction, so that, that's moving forward, we'll see that sidewalk yet this year. The other business item they had on their agenda was related to the irrigation, as you know, we've had underground irrigation all along East Pickard Road from end to end in the township in the East EDA District, and the road construction in twenty twenty-three wiped out all of that equipment, basically west of our, the US one twenty-seven interchange. The EDA board has been talking several times now about what, whether to do, whether to put it back, what that might look like, there is money budgeted potentially for a project, but we have some media board members that have different opinions on what that should look like, and so they, they did decide at their last meeting to, to invite irrigation design professionals to submit their qualifications, to basically provide advice to the EDA board on, on what a, a new system, what might look like, what, what would be best to include and best to, to leave out of a new system. Because we certainly don't have to put it back exactly what was there, and there may be better options, more efficient options, that sort of thing. So at this, at this meeting, at the June meeting, they did review the qualifications, were submitted by two different design professionals, both from Michigan, but outside of the county. And they did select the Graeger and Associates to help them with that, that project, so we'll be working with, with that consultant, bringing them probably likely to the next EDA board meeting to, to start that, that process of, of looking at, at potential elements for irrigation design. The planning commission met also on the eighteenth, they also had two items on their agenda, one of which is now on yours, they did review the proposed sidewalk ordinance, sidewalk and pathway ordinance that you have now on your agenda. And they did ultimately make the decision to recommend this ordinance to you, and so you have that before you tonight. This is the culmination of a number of months of, of discussion, and the ordinance is an update to our, our two thousand nine sidewalk and pathway ordinance, of course, we talked about some of the items during that ordinance later on. The other business item on their agenda was to look at potential updates to the, the twenty eighteen sidewalk construction policy. This was a policy that was put in place essentially to try to help implement the sidewalk and pathway ordinance in a equitable manner, it, it sets out some standards under which temporary relief from construction can be granted. And they're, it's been operating for a while now, the planning commission's a primary body that, that makes use of it, it's part of, mostly part of site plan reviews, and there has been interest for some time in updating it. They, this last meeting, they had their first look at, at a potential updated document, updated policy, with some of the items that have been discussed over previous meetings. They discussed it extensively, did not take action on it, so it is something to be coming up again in July for them, ultimately, that would also be coming to you for your, for your action. With a recommendation from the commission. So with that, happy to answer your questions you may have.
Just, just now that we're live, there was a pre-meeting comment about you being a trooper, the last couple of planning commission meetings, because they've been long, and you've had to stand there for a long time, helping answer questions and direct the commission through their, their work, anyways, I commend you for making it through.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Board member reports, item nine D on the agenda, Trustee Thering.
Yes, sir, thank you. As Mr. Nanny said, we, we had a full planning commission meeting, which I, I think they get more interesting as we go. I really appreciate all the conversation from Mr. Nanny to the board and what we had, so we had spent a lo- well over an hour on the ordinance update review, and probably just a little over an hour on the sidewalk policy update. It was, it's hard to take notes when, when you have so much activity happening, because if I spent all the time taking notes, I wouldn't be able to listen to what was actually going on and be part of the conversation, so. At that point, you know, that's, that's, I'll wait for any discussion I have when we get into the, I think, the first reading. I would like to say that I feel staff has done a great job on the ordinance and policy with only the best interest of our township. I absolutely recognize that, I would also like to say, though, as a, a board member and part of ownership, that not just myself, but we should all that we should not be afraid to request changes to make the ordinance or policy align with more how we want the township to be. I know, again, staff would never lead us down the wrong path, but we may see things a little bit different as ownership, so during our conversations, it, it's always good to speak up, because we all learn, learn a lot. I think that's, that's it for now.
Thank you, Trustee Thering.
Thank you.
Clerk Cody?
We just had our election commission meeting to approve the inspector list. And then, um. Tell me you give like election updates, or?
Sure.
So we have about a thousand ballots ready to go out on Monday, so people start getting their ballots in the mail Tuesday, Wednesday, depending on how long the post, postage takes, but I'll call people and be like, hey, let me know when you get your ballot, I'm sending it out now. No, but, um, so we're getting those, we haven't received all of our ballots yet, so we're just going with what we have. Don't we have ballot printer now, I thought we had ballot printer? That is just for the nine day early voting. Oh, I see. Which in the future, they're going to try to phase into that, or there's talk of it. Thank you. And so we have that, and then the AV applications are going to be phased out in the future, so in the next couple of years, you will not have the permanent application list, you will just have the permanent ballot list, so if you want to be on the permanent ballot list, make sure you mark the little box, and you'll just, that one application will be good for six years. So you just fill the one application out, it's good for six years, you'll automatically get your ballot, you don't want to vote, don't vote it. Giddyup. So, that's the future.
So check your box, is what she's saying.
Yeah. I checked that, I checked that first after election. Yeah, so let me know when you get your ballot, if you're going out Monday. I'll shoot you a text.
And I think it's worth noting too, for anybody listening, and anybody else for that matter, but is that the early voting will be done like it was at the presidential primary, in coordination with the city, is, is it going to be still the same location then?
Same location, same times, Forest Hall, eight to four, I believe it is. I just looked at it.
I know you send out notifications of that, but.
Yeah, we just send it out, it's good for the whole year. But we'll have it posted on the website, I'll probably post it on the door, it's going to be in the newspaper for the early voting sites, and.
Very good, thank you. Treasurer Rice?
Taxes are going out, so we're finishing up the last little bit this week, and so start looking in the mail, and that come July, so.
Or don't look in the mail.
Yeah, and then, you know, get, still have to pay the, the fees, so.
Thank you, Trustee Smith?
Just a couple more things that Commissioner Engler, at the meeting that they had on the eighteenth, one, they had a presentation from MMR, part of the requirement that they come in front of the county board once a year per contract to go over certain details, they've been in the county for twenty-seven years, and they have two, two bits of information I thought was interesting. thought was interesting. Union Township and Mount Pleasant are in a certain district where they have to have a 10 minutes or less response. It's kind of their goal. And so they reached a 92.2% success rate on getting to a scene within the township or in the city at 92.2% of the time last year. So I thought that was pretty good. Another interesting one was their Narcan protocol. That is where they go out and have to do, put the, do the Narcan themselves. And in 2022, there was 183, and '23, it was 153. So they attribute that not necessarily to the decline in usage, but just that there's more Narcan out there availability in the general public to kind of be a more on-the-spot type thing. So that was an interesting number that there's still that many, you know, Narcans that they're having to do in this area. And lastly, I would like to let you know that their tower project, the radio tower project, they had a milestone payment at number six. That is where they're getting the big towers put up so they can reach everywhere in the county and all the buildings and everything like that. So that is still progressing very nicely. And that is a grant from the state of Michigan. So I want to make sure that's clear.
Like $5 million?
Yeah, it's 4.2, 4.8. Yeah. So this one, you know, people see 439,000, they're like, oh, you know, it's like, no, it's, you know, it's all money that's reimbursed back by the state. So, so that's progressing very well.
I think I noticed the tower at dispatch, the, they have two towers up there right now. I think, so the original tower and the new one? So will the original stay, do you know?
I don't.
I think the original is going to stay there for now. What's going to happen is there's actually three phases. So they're not going to go to phase two until phase one is completely doing. Now, they might have to do some directional towers because when they do the testing, they're not going to go to phase two until everything's clear. So they might have to use that tower for directional or something, but they're going to go the whole county and we're not going forward. Then phase two will be distributing more handheld cameras and mobile units. So.
Yeah.
Education, I think, but, but they're not going forward until everything tests because they might have to, they say everything's going to work, but until they do it, they could have to do some directional. But all radios will work in all Isabella County and all buildings.
That's, that's good to know. I actually had a citizen ask me, how come there's two towers? Aren't they going to get rid of the other ones? So that's helpful to understand.
And then looking forward to the, going to the new jail tomorrow for the.
Yeah.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah, so as a reminder, that's in my notes to report on. So everybody saw my email about heading to the sheriff's facility tomorrow. So that's at 3:00. I just touched base with the sheriff today just to make sure everything was clear. I haven't seen a response back yet, but I'm, I'll let you know if there's a conflict of some sort.
I saw him after the meeting on Tuesday and he just confirmed we're still coming.
Okay, great.
But that's all I have.
So if you come, just show up, we're going to meet at the, there's a trailer outside where they have hard hats and vests.
Oh, okay.
So if it works for you.
I forgot all about it, so thanks. I was thinking I wouldn't be able to make it, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I just attended a grueling election commission meeting. But it was not, there wasn't a lot more than Clerk Cody already told you. Thank you.
I, I had the sheriff's facility down tomorrow, so I'm really excited for that opportunity to see the progress on it. And I don't know why, I always take notes on EDA to share because Mr. Nanny always covers everything I was going to say, so thank you for saving me some breath on that. So that moves us on to item 10, consent agenda. Happy and entertaining, any motions?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Support. Motion by Bill, support by Smith. Payables were, Trustee Thering?
Yep. I'm satisfied.
Any others, any discussion? Motion to approve consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That takes us to new business item A, Fox Meadows Estates. So Fox Meadows Estate Two, paving a special assessment district, resolution number five. So this is one of many steps that we go through, including the public hearing earlier today. Mr. Stuldryer, do you want to introduce anything on this?
Thank you. Just briefly, to remind the board, there is a report on page 17 of your, begins on page 17 of your packet. Project involves the completion of a mill and ultra-thin one-inch overlay in the Fox Meadows, I'll call it subdivision. Technically, there's two pieces to that. It's Hunter's Lane, Brittany Drive, Stony Creek Line, Drive and Meadow, Meadow Drive. The purpose of the resolution in front of you tonight, which is number five, it, this is the final action of the board review. It confirms the special assessment role in its finality. It determines that the number of special assessments will be 10, which is the maximum allowed by your policy. The first installment, if not paid in full, is due 9/1/24. It determines that the interest rate to be charged on future installments is 8%. Your policy says that it's the prime rate plus 3%, but no higher than 8%. Right now, the prime rate plus 3%, I want to say is eight and a half percent. So this is why this is 8% in your, in the resolution. And then it commands the township clerk to take certain actions related to next steps. Clerk is to deliver the assessment role to the treasurer with a warrant that commands the treasurer to collect the assessment. We need to then mail out notices of the special assessment within 20 days of approval, if this is approved tonight, to the property owners in the district. And in terms of next steps, later in your agenda, you'll consider, if this is approved, you'll consider a participation agreement with the county to actually do the work, County Road Commission. And then construction would start and be completed this year. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll make a motion if we've covered this enough. Everybody good?
Yes.
Make a motion to adoption of the Fox Meadows Estates and Fox Meadows Estate Two subdivision paving, special assessment district, resolution number five, to confirm the special assessment role. Determine the number of annual installments and determine the interest rate to be charged on future installments.
Don't we need to identify those?
They're stated in the resolution.
So you're comfortable with the ones that are in the resolution?
Yes, the ones that are stated in the resolution, comfortably.
Me too.
So I'm sorry, we had a motion by Brown, support by Bill's?
Yes, sir.
Sorry for interrupting.
Not at all.
Discussion on this? Seen none? This is a long journey on these things, these assessments, right?
Moving right along.
Seen no discussion. Would you do a roll call of this motion? Did everybody understand the motion?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Treasurer Mulkey?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Thank you, board. That moves us to item 11B on the agenda, Fox Meadows Estates and Fox Meadows Estate Two Paving Special Assessment District, Isabella County Road Commission Participation Agreement. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this one?
Thank you. And this report starts on page 25. I will mention, just going back to the last resolution, that that is the final board of trustees action that's required on this matter to create and formalize the district. On page 25 is a report, consideration to approve a participation agreement with the Isabella County Road Commission in the amount of $115,362. They will take care of getting the work done. You're used to seeing these participation agreements for whenever we do work with the county. The actual cost will end up being what the actual cost is that's borne by the Road Commission and what we end up having to pay. So if it's less, you'll see that there's some contingency built into this. If the final bills are less than, in this case, $115,362, those savings will be reflected in the amounts that are assessed against the individual property owners. Happy to answer any questions.
I move to approve the township participation contract with the Isabella County Road Commission, ICRC, for the Fox Meadows Estates and Fox Meadows Estates Two subdivisions, paving special assessment district for the completion of a mill and ultra-thin one-inch overlay on Hunter's Trail, Brittany Drive, Stony Creek Line and Meadow Drive in the amount of $115,362, and authorize the township manager to sign said contracts.
Support.
Motion by Bill, support by Brown. Discussion?
We're almost there.
Seen no further discussion. Clerk, do we need a roll call on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Would you do so then, please?
Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
All yeses.
Fantastic. Motion passes.
I will mention that the Road Commission is aware of this project, is in their production schedule, so I have no doubt that it will be completed this construction season.
That's good news.
Yay.
I think everybody will be happy to hear that.
That brings us to item 11C on our agenda, introduction, first reading of the new proposed sidewalk pathways ordinance that Planning Commission had in front of them in the last meeting. Trustee Thering referenced that as well. Mr. Stuldryer, do you want to introduce us, please?
Thank you. There is a report that begins on page 28 of your agenda packet. The current ordinance regarding sidewalk and pathways was adopted by the board in 2009. It's referred to as ordinance number 2009-03. Back in, I think it was 2021, there was discussion with Planning Commission. We were, made them aware that we felt there were certain deficiencies in there, that they were, that were causing them to struggle a little bit with implementing sidewalks in terms of their work. So those deficiencies that have been identified include minimum sidewalk width requirements are not consistent with current practice. Clarification is needed regarding standards for connecting public sidewalks to building entrances, which is not in the current ordinance right now. Current ordinance does not address where installation of pathways versus sidewalks would be preferred. The current ordinance is missing discussion as it relates to enforcement and, or I should say, standards for securing easements when sidewalks are needed to be placed outside of the road right-of-way. There's some lack of clarity and, and it's outdated with regard to enforcement responsibilities. The current ordinance does not make distinctions between how to handle properties that are more in the rural part of the township versus the urban areas of the township. In fact, the current ordinance conflicts a bit with the 2018 policy that was adopted that helped the Planning Commission when there were requests for waivers and of having to put in, in sidewalks temporary relief, if you will. And then the current ordinance does talk about a sidewalk and pathway committee, prioritization committee. There is not a lot of meat in that area and a lot of room for interpretation. And the relationship between that body and the Planning Commission is not as clear as it could be. So all of those things have been addressed in the proposed ordinance that's in front of you tonight. The proposed ordinance was developed in consultation with the township attorney, the township engineer and the Planning Commission. Key elements of the proposed ordinance include clear authority for the adoption of sidewalk or pathway construction policies by the board of trustees via resolution after receiving recommendations on that policy from the Planning Commission. Director Nanny spoke to that a few minutes ago. The statement by the board of trustees regarding authority for sidewalks and pathways and assessments of costs, there's a public act from 1931 that is incorporated, that's been incorporated in the existing ordinance. We brought that over into the current ordinance. In the existing ordinance, it was just referenced in the preamble. And the new ordinance is both in the preamble and it's spoken to in the body of the ordinance itself. There's updated use standards to confirm that the use of what we're calling these days micro-mobility devices, the battery-operated scooters, the electric bikes, and some restrictions on how fast those can go on the, on the sidewalks. We have updated construction standards and have placed those in the ordinance along certain drawings that will help the design professionals as they're doing their work. Violations and penalty provisions have been updated and begin to look more like the same enforcement type of mechanisms that we use throughout the various ordinances that, that we have. The Planning Commission has reviewed this ordinance several times. They voted five to two to recommend approval to the board of trustees. I will point out that the proposed ordinance, the sections that the Planning Commission is recommending be removed are in section four, subsections B4 and B5. I will note that the administration recommends that these subsections remain in the ordinance. And that, that should not cause any concern to anybody. We're looking for input from various people in Planning Commission's one. They have their recommendations. We have our recommendations. The point is to bring diverse viewpoints to the board of trustees for you to, to address how best you, you think things ought to be handled. We feel these items ought to remain in the ordinance. One, those items are permissive. There's nothing mandatory about them. As I said earlier, they've been part of the ordinance since it was originally adopted in 2009. Removing those sections actually eliminates options for property owners to deal with certain things. And by keeping them in there, it also provides, it provides options for the board of trustees to address certain things. So I think that is what I wanted to say about that. This is an introduction and a first reading. We're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the technical aspects of it, process or what have you. So, thank you.
I, I do want to comment in general on not just this, but the private road ordinance because I've had a lot of questions from some public regarding why the heck is the board of trustees even have this before us? When did we specifically ask for this ordinance to be rewritten? And the answer to that is, we asked this some time ago, that the entire, that they staff be given the task of making sure that our ordinances are kept up to date with our master plan, that they are alignment with our zoning ordinance, that they don't conflict with state law, that if there are discrepancies or missing pieces according to best practices, that they would recommend updating these ordinances to this board. And that's exactly what we're seeing. We've been doing that and I anticipate that that would continue. So I just want to let the public that has asked that, I want to publicly state this, that this is a directive from this board from several years ago when we began as a new board, that we wanted to make sure our ordinances were up to date and made sense for our community. And with that, are there questions for the manager?
Should we make a motion first?
Feel free to ask him. Feel free to ask him questions if...
Do you have a question?
No.
Okay. I would just like to make a statement. I actually agree with what manager Stuhl dryer said. But I would also like to add that I also agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation. I do think, I'm fine with that being in there, section four, B, section four, B, four and five. I do think it's important, though, even though there's slim chance that we would use it or not use it, that policy is, there is something in our policy that we're working on right now. Only because, and this is my perspective, number five, in situations where a proposed sidewalk or pathway does not currently have connecting sidewalks or pathways on the adjacent properties on either side, the Board of Trustees may require a property owner to post a cash deposit in lieu of construction in an amount equivalent to the cost of construction. I just do, I really feel that it's very important that we, now that we are working on the policy side of it, that we put some sort of policy on there, kind of explaining what our expectations would be. As in...
With regards to that?
With regards to how, what's the process, what we would do. I also feel that we specifically put in, and there is an appeal process in there for part of what's going on, but that we maybe reword the appeal part of the policy. Again, this isn't the ordinance. The ordinance as is, I'm okay with. But the policy that we're still looking at on the Planning Commission, that we maybe put something in there that includes and some sort of appeal process for number five, to allow somebody to come in and talk. Also, you know, when you talk about violations and penalties, that they just have their opportunity to have a discussion, which, and I'm sure would have already taken place before it becomes the board. I mean, I believe our staff is, they're on top of things like that and, and... But at the bottom, at the end of the day, if ownership wants to come in and be seen and be heard by a board, which is ownership, they, they should have to, they should have that ability. So I could vote yes if there's a motion that asks staff to, while, again, while we're working on the updated policy, to put that in. Does that make sense?
Right as you address that.
Sure.
The rec, the policy that will be constructed, that you're referring to, is in the hands and is the responsibility right now of the Planning Commission. So it is the Planning Commission that I think you need to bring your concerns to, to ensure that the policy that they are going to create and recommend to the board, that the board approve, contain any and all things that you'd like to see in that policy.
Okay. I thought the board made policy, though. The board, because it's referencing the board. I, I, I understand what you're, where you're getting at. But it references the board. We, the board, we're the ones that make the policy. So I, in my mind, I'm thinking, we should make the policy and then send it to the Planning Commission for review to get their point, their thoughts on it, and then come back to us. Maybe that isn't how it works. I just, I always thought, thought that that's our job is policy.
That's what I thought, too.
It could be that way.
They pretty much come up with it. We'll say, can you change this, or this, or this? Take, send it back if needed.
Well, I mean, there's already, in some respect, we already have some direction, but I, if we pass this, I guess our next Planning Commission meeting then, as ownership and a board, how, how would you like me to go back? Or how would you like us to do this? Because I, I know this is, and I understand why this is important. And I, it's important to me, so I...
I think you bring up a really good point.
Yeah.
And I think you should have asked them to include that.
So what's the proper, I guess my question then is, what's the proper way to do this so that we get the proper discussion and it starts from where it's supposed to? Is it supposed to start from the board asking the manager, we would like some, some language about, on the policy about this?
I, I think, is where I'm at. We, we could take up the policy first and then not do anything with it other than approve it. Or we could take the policy and then ask the Planning Commission for their input, which I think is really important, because their, Planning Commission's the one that's really affected by this. I mean, because you have to deal with it on your site plans.
Well, we could actually be one dealing with it as well if it comes back to us, because we may be the ones that may require someone to post. May, a hundred percent may. I mean, I know I'm kind of, I don't think it's been done. I, I think the one time that it was asked, we said no, if I understand our conversation correctly. So, but I understand the importance of it being in here. I also understand the importance as being part of ownership that I would like to see. I personally would like to see policy on it along with what's been requested of the Planning Commission.
So, so to continue, I, it could have gone either way. I appreciate it starting in Planning Commission first because Planning Commission has been dealing with this. They have a lot more firsthand experience dealing with it than this board. So I appreciate anything the Planning Commission will offer. From wanting your voice heard, I think you're in a unique, unique position in that you're the liaison for the Planning Commission. So you get to help influence not only the Planning Commission, but if it comes back before this board without what you'd like to see, you have another opportunity to speak to that, if that makes sense.
And I, I don't know if this will help or not, but we, the administration, were tasked by the board to review these, these ordinances. So we've been doing that. And we decided, along with attorneys and engineers and other folks, that we wanted input, because the board wants diverse input into the development of the ordinance. So we thought to ourselves, selves, since the Planning Commission uses this, why don't we use them as a conduit to look for and receive input? And so that's what we asked them to do. We formalized that a bit because of just the way these boards work, and asked them to publicly and in writing, if you will, through a vote, recommend things to the Board of Trustees. There's no obligation to have ever brought this before the Planning Commission, before it came to you, or after it comes to you, from the point of view of the ordinance development or even the policies. Although I will say that with, as the ordinance is currently written, we now start to bring formally into the equation the Planning Commission. But up till now, we thought, because the Planning Commission, seven, eight, nine members, spread throughout the community, diverse opinions, that they would have, provide the Board of Trustees with solid input. And the administration with solid input. So that's what we've done. We did go to the Planning Commission first before we brought it to you. We have taken those individual comments. I don't think there was ever any votes along the way in terms of what they were recommending or were glad to see in this ordinance or not. It was more us discerning that there was consensus as they were okay with certain aspects. Then, at the end of the day, so to speak, we said, well, we'd like you to make a recommendation to the board. And they agreed to do that. And they voted on that. And it was five to two. And so here we are. So in my mind, it's just another spot, very good spot, to solicit public input and diverse viewpoints. And so that's where I'll leave that.
What I, what I appreciate, and you got this through your time with the Planning Commission on this, is one thing I liked about this ordinance was that it allowed for an external policy that it references. And then that policy can be adapted, not just this year, or if we were to pass this in some incarnation that exists now on paper, but allows us to adapt if the community needs change. So we can change policy fairly easily as a board. So I really like that perspective. But you're right, I think there's two big steps to this. There's the ordinance itself, and then there's a policy that backs it up on how we go about some of that stuff. And I think you're right, a hundred percent correct. It's really important that we get that as best we can.
And I believe, if I recall correctly, that was some of the conversation about, do we make policy? And I don't know if it was Commissioner Buckley that had his feeling, and I agreed with, if I'm quoting the right person, that the Board of Trustees is the policymaker. So we didn't, we didn't delve into any policy discussion during the policy. Part of, you know, we talked about what was on the paper, not... I'm kind of in a catch-22 here.
But you began your discussion on policy.
Yes. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
But I also think, too, when you get into policy, you got policymaking and you got policy approval. You could easily separate that out and just say the Planning Commission could make the policy. Doesn't mean it's approved. The Board of Trustees still approves it all. So that still gives us that authority to approve all of the policies that govern the township. So that's where I kind, I see where you're coming from, but I'm just trying to differentiate a little bit. I have no problems with the Planning Commission formulating and making and recommending policy as long as the township board has the final authority to approve and add changes to that, whatever this group of seven decide.
So how do we go about requesting staff? I mean, we, we have a, I guess, you know, we have to have the conversation first before staff would take, take it and try to make something out of it. Is that correct?
I don't think so, if I understand you right. What, what I don't think you want us to do, whether it's this board or the Planning Commission, is walk into the room and say, we need a policy regarding, a construction policy for sidewalks, was just a blank piece of paper. So that means that staff has to draft, if you will, something to, for folks to start talking from. And that's what we've done here with this ordinance. And I believe that there was a draft policy or at least an outline that staff brought to the Planning Commission, so they have a place to start from. And I think that's where the Planning Commission is.
In between tape, we had good discussion.
And it's not done yet.
No, sir. No, sir.
And it's section 4A. And Rodney, just step in here if you, if you need to. This talks about adoption of a sidewalk and pathway construction policy. Says the Board of Trustees made from time to time, adopt or amend by resolution, designating certain things. And then it says, there's five items that talk about the policy, what it is likely going to be addressing, the issues it's likely to be addressing. And it also says that in this ordinance, it's telling the Board of Trustees to go to the Planning Commission with the request to review and recommend action. That's how this ordinance is set up. Generally correct? What I may not see in one through five right now, just based on a quick reading, is, and remember, we're in introduction, first reading, so the design can change. What I don't see right away is that the policy, in addition to construction, addresses in more specificity what you want done with B4 and B5. Although it may be addressed that, number one, the policy may include allowances for temporary relief from sidewalk constructions under specific circumstances in certain designated areas. And I think one of the items you're talking about in either B4 or B5 is, you got, you got a lot, you're going, somebody's going to build on it, there's no sidewalk in front of it, on either side, there's sidewalks on it, and what are we going to do with that opening?
To me, it appears like this, I mean, like the policy is the real meat and potatoes of everything. That is what brings all the controversy up, is that policy portion. I think there's a lot of really good changes made in this ordinance from the first one in 2009. I think a lot of very good ones, a lot of needed ones. And I really like the section 4A, putting it in there on the adoption of the policy in construction. I think that makes a lot of sense. So I think this is well done, and we got to remember that. Ordinance gets done first, and the policies will follow after, once this gets adopted, because who knows? This may change. Policies will then have to change. So it's kind of, it's an ongoing discussion. And just, you know, we approve this, and then a little bit later, we're going to approve the policy.
So what are we, I'm sorry, Connie.
I was just going to ask you what the two dissenting votes had to say.
Actually, I was one of the two dissenting votes, but it was based on a question that I wanted to ask that I felt was important. And Rodney kind of had touched on it, but I needed a little more information. But the call to question came up, so it was done. So I just wasn't comfortable. So I was one. The other one, I can't, I cannot answer to that. And, and really, I just really would like to know what, if we would, if we would ever ask somebody to post cash? Are we asking them to do it all at once? Are we asking to do that in five years? Are we charging them a finance fee? What if I'm a sidewalk? That's what, if I do that for a living, it costs $25,000 to do it, to have somebody else do it, but it really only costs me eight? You know, I don't know how, how that works.
And I, there are other provisions in the sidewalk that, in this ordinance that address some of the, you know, how and by whom just do things actually get paid? And this particular section that you're talking about, it, it's in the state statute. So I'm just hesitant that you remove it.
Yeah.
And I think that as you're able to articulate the concerns of both you, and you represent the board, so that, you know, you're that conduit, that I'm just suggesting the best place to take up that issue is in the policy development. Rodney, what are your thoughts?
I think that that's a reasonable approach. I do, I do like the, the comment that was made about perhaps specifically stating in that, in that section, talking about what can be in the policy to, to address this funding question. But I, I think that the discussion at the Planning Commission level could lead to a good policy statement that would address the concerns that have been raised.
So there's two readings. So there's two readings. Is it possible to have the second reading after we finish the completion of the policy?
Well, that's sort of the chicken and the egg. For the policy, for the Planning Commission to have any standing in this matter, the ordinance needs to be approved first.
Not necessarily. I mean, we have two readings, we'll have the first reading, then let's get our policy, because that makes a difference on how I would vote, as to based on what's in the policy.
Well, the Planning Commission doesn't have any right to develop a policy unless 4A is on the books, being approved.
Oh, great, so then the Board of Trustees needs to make the policy, right? I, that's, that's kind of what we were talking about. What you just said is, we don't feel that we were a policymaking board, so the policymaking board needs to make the policy.
Well, this is for the board.
Oh, you as the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I would disagree with that.
You said "we", you meant the Planning Commission, right?
I like what Trustee Smith, I like Trustee Smith's comments, because I guess maybe got in line with your thinking in that what we're kind of asking from the Planning Commission, who has the most expertise in this area, because you're dealing with it on a, by meeting basis, basically, that we're asking for your input on helping create a policy, because we want that information as we go through it ourselves and go through an approval or denial process. So I think it's really helpful to hear what the Planning Commission's thoughts are on this. Clerk Cody.
Okay, so as far as reading over this, I think everything looks great. The two points, or 4 and 5, that everybody's pointing out is the part of the state statute, which is the one goal that we're, like, one of the things that we're trying to do is be more aligned with the state and trying to update everything and making everything run smoother together, so we're not way over here and they're over here. But I like it, I think it looks great the way it is. That's my opinion, and, you know, I read it, asked questions, you know. But that's, you know, my personal thing. And I love A, I think that's great.
A, oh, is it true, because it's Public Act 246, which lists items 4 and 5 in the Public Act, that if we don't list them here, they're still active? There's still an option for the board? And therefore, by not putting them here, we're kind of hiding that fact from those that are looking at our ordinance, unless they go and look up Public Act 246. And so to me, it seems like the inclusion of those, unless, unless my premise is wrong, the inclusion of those is actually being more transparent. Is that accurate, that, my premise?
Yeah, that goes through my mind, because you can have this ordinance on the books 10 years from now. You can have a board that all of a sudden wants to do something the state statute allows, and you're going to be able to do it. And it's like, where does this come from, in terms of transparency?
And I understand the pushback that some gave on 4 and 5, and why the Planning Commission had the discussion they did. I think, reading it by itself, you go, wow, that, that could be an overreach. Well, I highly think that, unless we're in extreme case, this board would never do that kind of overreach. I don't think any board would, that you'd get a majority to do an overreach unless it was absolutely necessary. So I think 4 and 5 are kind of those last resort kind of things that probably never get executed.
Section 4A included another number or another item that was more explicit about that the policy that this ordinance requires the Planning Commission to develop, bring to the Board of Trustees for eventual vote, so that then the Planning Commission can use it. If there was something in 4A that addressed your concern, that way you would...
I just, at the end of the day, how do we, how do we get to that point to have the conversation? Not that it's going to ever be in the policy, but just at least to have the discussion.
What conversation? Because you've already started one conversation on the policy.
Right, but it doesn't have anything about what this is saying and the recommendation from the Planning Commission. We haven't, we didn't talk about, we didn't, you know what, maybe that's our fault. We didn't talk about what necessarily, what the policy should be, because the seven of us that were here were thinking, again, that the Board of Trustees is the policymaker.
But you can't really, but you really can't set the policy until the ordinance is done.
Is there, is set with it.
And even it says right here, under, you know, A5, prior to the adoption or amendment, "The proposed policy resolution shall be provided to the Planning Commission with a request to review and recommendations for action." It spells it out right here, that we want the Planning Commission to review any policy changes and amendments before we review this as a Board of Trustees.
So if we can't require that unless...
Unless you have this done.
You could look at that in two different ways. I mean, I guess it doesn't have anything in it about that, so we would have to recommend that we put it in it.
You as a, you as a Planning Commission would vote to approve or vote against it if it doesn't have the things in there to recommend.
Or you could, okay.
Which is why I think the first place you, I mean, you've had it with us, so we've got to hear it.
Yeah.
But the real opportunity for what the Planning Commission ultimately would recommend to this board is to have that discussion there.
Okay.
And then when it comes back, we can have that discussion all over again here, right?
But I still think 4 and 5 is important, because it's part of the state law, or ed.
I was, I'm fine with 4 and 5, that's, that's not what I'm getting at.
But the policy, yeah.
I believe, my feeling is, is that there should be something in the policy, and how do we get to there? What you're telling me is, is the next Planning Commission meeting, that if somebody wants to talk about it and make a recommendation, then so be it. And if the board, Planning Commission approves that recommendation, then it'll come before the Board of Trustees.
Or whether they approve or deny. We're just looking, we're just looking for your, the Planning Commission's views.
Okay.
And whatever they may be.
Yeah, so hopefully you prove something that you have consensus on, that you would say these are good ideas to look at.
At least we can take your discussions and your meeting notes and stuff like that, and just got a basis to where we'll move forward.
So, Mr. Nanny mentioned possibly, and I think this is trying to go after your concerns, Section 4A possibly adding a small piece of language there that addresses that the policy may include direction towards cost sharing, or costs, is that accurate, which?
Yeah, that's the idea, and we can prove that language.
That's all I'm suggesting, is that, that would allow it to be there, doesn't mean that the policy has to address it, but it allows the policy to, it has the ordinance itself reflect that there's a policy that may address that issue.
Okay.
I just have one question here. Does 4B3 make it possible for us to finally get sidewalks on Bluegrass Road?
Easements is one issue though.
That's what I was like thinking the same.
Well, this doesn't say anything about an easement, does it?
You still have private property, yeah. But, I mean, to your point, the governing body has full authority to go through condemnation processes and get that easement, at least go to court, if you want to do that. You can, you can initiate special assessment districts. We're used to seeing citizens initiate them. The Board of Trustees can do all these things, if they're so inclined to do it.
I've been inclined for four years, so.
I understand that, but it takes four.
Is it, am I wrong in that I thought I saw something in here regarding wider easements? Because the history, the history that we had in the township and why we're at where we are in Bluegrass is the road commission would put the road in, and they wouldn't get easements for this type of activity, sidewalks. And so now we're stuck with a three, five lane road there with no easements for sidewalks. And this is encouraging that exploration of getting easements when you're doing road improvements.
8.2.
8.2, I thought I saw.
Oh, sorry, 8B2, sorry.
Thank you for finding it, I knew it was there, I just couldn't remember. So I think, as I read this, Trustee Bills, that was the part that I was excited about, because that at least is beginning to address what's been the roadblock for Bluegrass. And will be for other places.
President.
Clerk Cody?
Should we make a motion to introduce it and stuff?
Sure, we can do that. I have some questions still, but we can do that.
My, well, right. I'll make a motion to introduce and conduct the first reading for the proposed new sidewalk and pathway ordinance.
Support.
Motion by Cody.
Oh, sorry.
Support.
Did you, did you need to?
I just want to say that was ripped off for me.
Motion by Cody, support by Bills.
Yeah, well, we'll give it to you, Bills. You've had the support.
To begin a first reading, forgive me one second, and introduce this ordinance, discussion continuing.
Is it with that change on 4A?
We're just having the first reading, it's not...
Not at this point.
Right now, we have to request it.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but...
No, I'm good, I appreciate, I appreciate all the discussion and all the feedback. I just want to be able to go back to the Planning Commission with...
I mean, would you like this 6 added?
Yeah, I guess, let me get a consensus from the board, is there general consensus that it would be helpful to have something in 4, in Section 4A regarding what we were just discussing?
Before it goes for the first reading?
It is on the first reading, but before it goes to the second one.
Okay, yeah.
Because then you, you know, you have your first reading, you make the change, then go to the second one.
Let me ask this, are there objections to that?
No.
Okay, so would you be willing to draft some language regarding that then, for us?
For 6.
Regarding what?
The 4, Section 4A 6, as far as looking at costs. Basically, the suggestion, I think, that Mr. Nanny had...
At a minimum, in the discussions by the board's not done. The ordinance that comes before you for a second reading will have more in 4A than it does now.
Okay, and that's what I was asking, because we, there was consensus, in fact, no objections that we'd like to see that, so.
Yeah, I'm assuming consensus on that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear.
Thank you, man, as you're still dryer and...
I mean, in my opinion, everything else looks great. Good job.
I had a few questions. I had a couple hours on this with our manager, and then yesterday at the management meeting, we had more discussion on it. And there were a few things I wanted to lift up that I had discussed, just to kind of bring them out. One was, forgive me for not noting, Section 7, and the manager references the micro mobility devices. And the question I had is, because it does give permission, gives priority for pedestrians, but it gives permission for electric bikes, bikes, maybe a scooter, right? Provided they give right-of-way to pedestrians, and that they don't exceed 10 miles an hour. And so my question to that was, are we in any way opening up scooters in our community inadvertently here? In other words, we're saying, yeah, scooters are allowed. Does that mean that somebody who's riding a scooter in the city decides they're going to change the geofence on those and be allowed to drive into our township? And so I didn't think it did, but I wanted to make sure that we either are prohibiting that intentionally or allowing it intentionally, if that makes sense.
I'd like to speak to that, I think that, you know, the city signed up with a contract with those people, and unless we contract with them, it's probably not a good idea for them to get their scooters over here, because they won't be able to reasonably collect them or monitor them here.
I agree, but what happens in the event, and I've been asked this by the city manager, how many incursions do you have, because the geofencing doesn't always work perfect, and they might decide to go past target into an area in the township.
Okay, so then they are already monitored by GPS, so the people go pick them up. They go, the people that own them.
Is it permitted, is my question, by this?
I don't think it's permitted, per se.
I don't either.
In order for them to operate as a business, and Mr. Nanny and I did discuss this, I mean, one, they're using our right-of-way, and, you know, we have ways of managing that. These are franchises that, that they have an agreement with the city and a separate agreement with CMU. And that's, that's to protect their interest, I mean, they're interested in agreements, to protect their interests as well as it allows the counterparty to protect theirs. You, did I capture that?
I think you have to say something about zoning for that then, if you have, talk about commercial stuff, don't you? I mean, that, you know, that goes into the zoning ordinance.
We don't have a business license ordinance in order for a business to operate. Some communities require you to get a license.
Mm-hmm.
Just, it's just a piece of paper and a little bit of money.
Yeah.
Exchange for a check.
Yeah, and that's, that's often one of the first ways that, you know, in order to get a license, you have to do certain things. And if you don't, you don't get the license, and you're not able to operate, no matter what the business is. I am not, I guess, overly concerned at this point with that item. And I'll also say that, like any ordinance, hopefully, we kind of monitor and manage these things over time, and not just once every 15 years. And so if we come into that situation, then we can proactively do things that protect our interests, if that's what, if that's what we're trying to do. We have not had, we've had several discussions with the companies, but we're not getting what I would consider pressure to be allowed to operate. But we, as a township, we have a lot of students. And the way I've been kind of waiting, approaching this whole scooter business, is to let these folks go first, see what the problems are, see what they figure out.
Exactly.
And then we'll come in behind them, because we have a lot of students who want to use them too. And I'm not sure we need to prohibit them, but, you know, why be first?
I have an, I have an issue with that as well. The scooter, the electric-powered micro mobility devices not exceeding 10 miles an hour, I think is a little bit unreasonable, since a regular bicycle can go 25 with the right motor. Doesn't it really? The right, the right human, you know, easily.
I thought that's what you meant.
Yeah.
I think if you go to that level, I bet you you can find where bicycles are prohibited by state law on sidewalks.
Well, they're not...
They're meant for the roads.
Prohibited, but they have to yield, isn't that true?
A bicycle has all the rights as a car on a road.
Right, I know, but don't, they, we talked about this before at a meeting, and decided that they're allowed, but they have to yield on a, if there's, if there's no safe path.
Everybody has to yield to the pedestrian.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, the rollerblader has to yield to the walker.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think 10 miles an hour is not going to fly with anybody. I don't go 10.
Do you have an electric bike?
No.
Yeah, you have a pedal bike.
Right.
You probably average 13, and oftentimes you're going 22 or something.
Can.
Yeah. I used to do the same thing.
Yeah.
But I always rode the road.
Well, I don't have a death wish, so I'm not doing that.
I found it to be safer. And I rode in the middle of the lane.
Oh, my God. Okay, anyway, thank you very much.
I half wanted to bring up the scooters in general anyways, because we've not had many of those discussions, and it just, in general, I think it's being managed much better in the city than it was a year ago. It's much cleaner.
It is. They're all lined up right in front of the bird bar and grill at party night. Just saying.
Well, the crazy thing I've noticed with the scooters is that you're seeing a lot of privately owned scooters on these trails too, not just the, these companies we're talking about. The students have a lot of these privately owned electric bikes, and... the, these companies we're talking about, uh, the, the students have a lot of, these privately owned electric bikes and uh, scooters that they're keeping right at, at their home, um, so we're seeing a lot of that on the, on the trails also.
And I, and I have no issue with that, just to be clear, uh, my concern with, um, that section seven was, what if that company decides to move the geofencing a little bit, just to give them a little more wiggle room into, say, the Bluegrass area? Are we gonna shut that down via the ordinance, or are we going to permit it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that was.
That's for another day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I agree with the manager's comment that if it becomes a problem, then, then we address it.
Yeah.
Um, but I did have a question on, uh, eight D, eight D. And, and this really came, um, from the EDA. Two meetings ago, there was, um, discussions on sidewalk technology, and it, and I may get this wrong, so anybody jump in if they feel I get it wrong, but is my, I understand that there are some new standards in Michigan with, regarding the cement mix that can, is supposed to be used. And, uh, because there's the change in that mix, and how you install it is a little bit different now too, that has to be sealed very quickly. Um, and I didn't happen to make that meeting, but I, I, I saw some of the discussion on it, so does, this, this ordinance, as I read eight B D, and this is where I was looking for it, was it, this is sidewalks shall be constructed or of concrete in a thickness, blah, blah, blah. I didn't know if we needed a state in there somewhere using standard, um, Michigan's, Michigan standards for concrete quality? I, I'm not using the right words, I'm sure, but I didn't know if that needed to be put in here in any way.
Is that what the hot mix asphalt is?
S P S B.
I don't know enough about it.
Okay.
I was just kinda curious about it.
Oh.
Does anybody know much about this? I don't do sidewalk construction.
It says right here that the standards of the applicable road authority with jurisdiction shall prevail.
Oh, good, where's that?
Right at the top of eight, in the first paragraph before any of the letters.
You go, girl.
Thank you.
Well, we're, we're pouring hundreds of feet of sidewalks a day, and we're not sealing anything.
No, I know, but it, it, the, why I bring this up is the tribe had an issue with this, this last fall. They had some sidewalk put in, ended up not being put in properly because of this new mix, and then they had to, end up having to come back, dig it all up and redo it.
Well, it got salt on it or something?
It, it all cracked up over the winter, yeah. That's as I understand it.
We've seen that, you know, with the salt and salt spreading and things like that on new concrete, we can't do, but.
There's, there's, uh, what came up the EDA board, just to, to, to add that was, essentially that there's some additives that are now allowed in, to the mix, that, that are changing the chemistry.
Lot more fly ash.
Exactly.
They're putting a lot more fly ash in our concrete.
And what's interesting is, this is the same stuff that caused, uh, Detroit Metropolitan Airport to have to replace their runway almost,
Oh, my god.
Almost immediately after it was built. So I'm not sure why they're doing it, but, but nonetheless, it's created circumstance where you have to be more careful with, with what you do, and as, as was said, you have to seal it very quickly to keep, keep, uh, have, from having problems. I, I mean, the, the, these standards came directly from our engineer, um, so I, I would just, I, in, in anything like this, I would defer to the engineers. And, and they are go- of course, going to have even more detailed specifications when, when plans go out, anyway, for township constructed sidewalks. Beyond that, all we can really do is specify to use standard engineering practices as.
Yeah, and I think that was my one concern, is to make sure that if someone's putting a sidewalk, since it's gonna be used by public, that they meet some standards, and I appreciate trustee Bill's comment, comment on that. Uh, o- overall, I'm, I'm really happy with a lot of this. Um, trustee Smith, um, I think said it well, that, um, the first attempt at this ordinance back in two thousand nine was a great first step. This just takes it, and goes after some things we've seen as, as issues for a long time, so I'm, I'm really thrilled.
Changes be made down a road when it's tested, you know.
Right.
So.
Well, this is our first reading, so, any other comments?
No.
Trustee Theron, do you feel like your issues are, were addressed?
Oh, absolutely. I, I, I appreciate everybody's patience and, uh, feedback. I, I just need to go back to the planning commission, and maybe with the help of Mr. Nanny, convey the right. I wanna, I, you gotta get it right. I gotta get it right, otherwise, we'll, we'll all be right where I was a little bit ago, so. We don't wanna do that. We wanna, we wanna do the right thing, so, thank you, everyone.
I'm really glad you're on the planning commission, because that, that's good that you're concerned about.
It's, it's getting more and more interesting, and, and I mean that in a good way, so.
So, last call, anything else today? So, let the record show, we introduced, uh, the ordinance, and that we had our first hearing on it.
We should.
Vote.
You're not gonna vote?
Oh, we didn't vote on it, no. That was discussion, debate on the motion. Thank you for calling me out on that. So, just as a reminder, we had a motion to conduct the introduction and first reading. Uh, is that unclear to anybody?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
All in favor?
You had three of us ready to, you know, pounce on you.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. That was a long time ago. I forgot. Uh, so moving on to item, uh, eleven D, uh, consider adoption of the new private road ordinance as ordinance number twenty-four oh one, and just a note, um, for the public, uh, we began our first reading sometime back in March. Board of Trustees, the planning commission spent, I think, three, at least three meetings on it. Uh, we've had three meetings prior to this on it. Um, so there's been a lot of discussion and, uh, time on this particular proposed ordinance. Mr. Steeldryer, would you like to introduce anything in this?
Yeah, just briefly, um, asking the board to consider adoption of the new private road ordinance as a general ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one. Uh, this has been through, I think, multiple levels of review by multiple parties. Township attorney, public services director, the planning commission, citizenry, and much of that, uh, input has been incorporated in the ordinance that is in your packet tonight. Um, you are correct, the, uh, uh, board of trustees dealt with this on March thirteenth, March twenty-seventh, June twelfth, and again, tonight. Um, planning commissions reviewed this, uh, at least three times, March nineteenth, April sixteenth, May twenty-first. Um, the planning commission, a- and again, this was, that, it's the same type of thing. We, we, with intent, went to the planning commission to solicit their input to help the administration, which eventually helps the board of trustees, develop the best ordinances that they can. Uh, there was no, um, legal requirement, or any other requirement, that we ever even bring this before the planning commission. Uh, but if we did not, then we think we'd be in, the administration would be in violation of other parts of policy governance. Um, it's okay that the administration can have a, a, a point of view. Ultimately, it's the board of trustees, and we're gonna do whatever you want us to do, and the fact that we, as an administration, might disagree with a planning commission or a board of trustees is near the, neither, here nor there. Um, it's just part of the dialogue. It shouldn't be, uh, internalized as antagonistic, or, or anything like that. Uh, we're just looking for input. I ask folks all the time for their opinion and input, and sometimes I take it, sometimes I don't. If I don't, I hope the folks aren't so offended that when I ask again, they don't provide it. You know, because you don't take everybody's input all the time. Um, so, the planning commission did, uh, uh, deliberate and, and made a formal recommendation to the, uh, board of trustees for adoption, six-two favorable vote. Um, the administration recommends adoption, be happy to address anything in the proposed ordinance that, uh, you may have.
The only thing I would add to your explanation would be, unlike in the sidewalk ordinance, uh, the recommendation by the planning commission disagreed with the recommendation by the staff or the organization. In this case, um, planning commission made some changes to the private road ordinance that were ultimately adopted and brought back to us in that light. Uh, so in that case, the, the administration agreed with the recommendations of the planning commission, as I understand it. Correct?
I believe so.
So, I mean, I think that's.
Conversation that.
There were, there were changes made as a result of, um, s- some of the public input that was taken at, at your meetings and the planning commission. So I think that shows things are working.
I move to adopt the new private road ordinance as ordinance number twenty-four dash oh one. Support.
Uh, so we have motion by Bills, support by Cody. Discussion, trustee Smith?
Um, on page four, uh, which would be page fifty-four of the document, um, on your description, you kind of went some narratives and stuff about grandfathered in. Said the current ordinance two thousand dash nine, this is a proposed, uh, private road ordinance, and it's not a zoning regulation, and are not adopted under the authority of the state zoning act, so there's no grandfathered private roads. Does, um, a police powers general ordinance allow for grandfathered roads? So you can just say this new ordinance takes effect from any new construction from here on out? Or you still have to reference, everything in the township has to be up to the standard?
Do you, am I making myself clear? Am I, okay?
I think so.
Okay.
Um, this is a police powers ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
There is no grandfathering.
So legally, there's no, no ability to grandfather something in, under a police powers ordinance?
Well, it was, I, I'm pretty sure you could write the ordinance to, if you had the right specificity.
Okay.
To allow something that we know exists today to occur.
And I, I, I'm sorry, not wanting to.
Maybe I'm not explaining myself correctly. I guess my thought.
It is the idea that, even though we have not found any existing private roads, that would, if this were adopted, would immediately be in violation, that there may be some out there that we haven't found or identified.
And that they would not need to be addressed if that, they were be, to be grandfathered in?
Well, as the ordinance is currently written, there's no exceptions, there's no grandfathering.
Right.
The premise we're making is that we feel we've done a pretty good job to identify anything that would be a private road under this definition. We've looked at it, and it is not in violation of this ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Nanny?
Uh, the, the one thing I'll add to that is, is, uh, uh, I mean, police powers ordinance applies generally across the township. It's standards that apply generally across the township, so in that way, there's no, no grandfathering in, uh, there's no protected nonconformity, like there is under zoning.
So you can't just ignore this non, you.
But, but, what we did, uh, was we set a standard that applied generally across the township for those roads that exist in the township, and that's section four.
Yeah, and that's less than the other requirements.
Exactly, and so that's how we, we got around that space, but still, uh, recognize the roads exist. Uh, and so we simply set a standard, a general standard in section four, that applies evenly to all existing private roads in the township. Uh, and that standard is public serv- uh, public safety based, and it, it's essentially two standards, one, minimum twenty-foot gravel surface, and number two, a, a clearance, fifteen-foot clearance, uh, and it's entirely to ensure that, that emergency vehicles can get down that space. Um, so, the existing roads in the township, uh, as, that are in the township as of the date this ordinance was adopted, or is adopted, um, uh, they are governed by section four.
Okay.
And they have to meet the standards of section four, right as soon as the ordinance is adopted, nothing's grandfathered in, they must meet it. But as, as was mentioned by, by township manager, we have reviewed those, those existing roads and found that all of them would comply with this proposed ordinance.
Thank you, and I just have one more question.
Sure.
Um, on page eight, or sixty-three of the packet, serving nine lots or more,
the private road shall fully conform to the Zebella County Road Commission residential road standards. And I forgot to bring it with me, and I apologize, but under the residential road standards, there was a curb status in an uncurbed residential. One was three inch, one was two and a half. Are we gonna, like, I think the uncurved was two and a half inch, and the curved was three. I'm assuming a private road most likely would be, so we would be saying, if the private road is curbed, it's gonna be three? If it's an uncurved, it'd be two and a half. Would that be the assumption?
Exactly.
Okay.
Consistent with the state.
Okay, so it's curbed, uncurbed, I just, 'cause some people may sit there and go, well, it's half an inch of, you know, that's could be a lot of money. So I just wanna make clear to the public that if it's an uncurbed private, it's gonna be two and a half, if it's curbed, private, it's gonna be three per road commission standards. Okay, I just wanna make that question and kind of statement as well, so.
And I really appreciate your first question, 'cause I think if I had a general concern with any general ordinance, because it's police powers, um, how is this affecting existing private roads? And, you know, try to get the answer for what are, do we have a complete list of that? Well, not, not exactly. Um, but, so I would, I wouldn't be happy if we ended up passing this, and then a month later, somebody's getting dinged because they don't meet this, right? Um, I, I would want to, as a board, come back to this and say, well, how do we address that? Because that was not the intent. The intent of this is not to go after any private roads that exist, it is to make sure that the private roads that are put in meet public safety standards at least, and that the neighbors are protected, because they have agreements that are in place, and.
I meet the standards of the existing ones that are already there.
Right.
I mean, if they're already there, there, there's already a standard, so we have to at least meet that, right?
That was the two that voted no, part of their reasoning was unintended consequences. I would, no, I won't say that was a hundred percent of, but that was definitely unintended consequences, so you just kind of.
Can I address that, please?
Absolutely.
Um, I mean, we don't have crystal balls. Unintended consequences. I would argue that there, there's more risk for unintended consequences under our existing ordinance than under the new ordinance. You are always gonna have unintended consequences. If we thought of the consequence, it wouldn't be unintended, we deal with it, and we've been doing that. It's, if, if, if we u- use the unintended consequence as a guide, then I'm afraid we'll never do anything. You know, there's, there's an unintended consequence from walking across the street, you know, I get hit by a car. Uh, it's not quite the same as trying to prove a negative. There are some negatives that can be proved. I can prove that there's no milk in a cereal bowl by looking at it, but there are many things where you can't prove the negative, and, um, so that's what I'll say on that.
I mean, to go, that was kind of the, you're right about that, but that's why not having an appeal process makes it harder. But it's a police power, it was a police power before, it's, continues to be a police power, but if, and we have no idea if we're gonna have an unintended consequence. It isn't the intention of the township to, you know, I do not believe they put this to find an unintentional consequence, but that's where I struggle with, uh, some sort of appeal process, or appe- I, I don't even know if the word appeal is the right word. Some, some way, before it has to be implemented, they can have a discussion. I, I don't know what the right word is, but that's.
Yeah, I, I wrestle with the appeal process a little bit too. Um, and I'm just gonna tell you how I got to being okay with it. Um, I think you brought this up first, at the first reading maybe, um, a- and that is, this is, it, it is pretty cut and dry, what the requirements are. Uh, there's not. Uh, there's not a lot of wiggle room for interpretation. You, you're either twenty feet wide or you're not. Um, you know, that, that, there are, it's not a lot to it. And secondly, I think the old ordinance was really more of an administrative approval process, as I understood it. Um, this at least puts it before a public body of nine that, um, hopefully, in general, you're not gonna get five that are making the wrong choice because of in, in other words, it's kind of an appeal of sorts. I, I doubt the administration is gonna bring you a private road construct that doesn't meet the minimum requirements. Uh, for approval, they're gonna tell the applicant, you know, here's, here's our minimum requirements, then it's up to the planning commission to go through this, that. And in some ways, it's a secondary approval beyond the administration, because the administration will recommend that to the planning commission to approve it. Does that make sense? And that's kind of how I, I felt it was a lot better appeal process than the existing one, as I understood it.
Well, the, the intent of this ordinance, the objective, is that at the end of the day, at the end of the day, a permit is issued. And you have to go through certain things to be issued a permit. And so if a permit is denied, you know, unless you're arbitrary and, you know, the, the denial has to be based on violation of this, this, the ordinance. And so I, I just find it hard to imagine that if you comport with this ordinance, that the permit would be denied. If you create an opportunity for an appeal, what, what are you what would be the objective of the board? To issue the permit anyways? Which would be in violation of the ordinance? And that doesn't feel like it makes sense to me. It feels different than appealing a, a, a fee on a water bill.
Yeah.
You know, it's a, it's a permit for a private road and if it wasn't wide enough, and they don't want to make it wide enough, and they're stomping their feet, and they want, and there's something in here that allows them to come to the Board of Trustees. What is it you're gonna do? As currently written, it doesn't give the Board of Trustees the authority to issue the permit anyways. I suppose that, you, you would need that kind of language to effectuate an appeal. But why would you?
You mean like a variance?
Not, yeah, but this isn't zoning.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, this, um, and, and I know it's difficult and you know, I, I've said out loud to staff that, that the private road ordinance is probably the one ordinance that I failed to fully appreciate, that it, it, it lands squarely in that space between the urban and the rural aspects of the community. And so, you know, that's a lesson learned in terms of how you approach things, but appealing, you know, the issuance of a permit that is not in compliance and being granted that permit, it just feels to me like we're going backwards in terms of the old boys network, if I could be so blunt. So, that's how I internalize that.
I, I'm gonna guess that the concern, at least this is how I interpreted it, when I was going through this in my head, is that it wasn't that, um, a mistake was made, the planning commission inadvertently denied a permit that met the standard. And I don't know how that would happen even, because that's where I came to the, the requirements are pretty clear. Because that's what I wrestled with too. Because I get that, with zoning, you've got the ZBA to go to, and then beyond that, you've got the circuit court.
I, I don't, I don't necessarily, I don't have an issue with it, other than I, I'm just, my concern is the existing, the existing roads, not roads that are done from when this is accepted. That, that's where I struggle the most.
I just know we've had discussion on that issue, and I wanted to bring that back, because I, I certainly wrestled with that. Yes, uh, Clerk Cody?
I mean, we don't have any roads that are not in compliance with this at the moment, so I don't understand why we're talking about it so much. I mean, it's good, it looks great, they did a great job. I mean, I think we should just call questions, stop talking about it.
Are you requesting that?
Yes, I am.
Uh, so we need a roll call on this.
Okay.
Is it, so we have a motion before us on the private road ordinance, is it may unclear on the motion? Clerk Cody?
Clerk Cody, yes. Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Theron?
Yes.
All yeses.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for keeping us on task, Clerk Cody. That brings us to item eleven E on the agenda, policy governance two point five, cash flow ratio. Uh, Mr. Stuljar, would you like to introduce this?
Well, the, the report's on page seventy-one, I will not, uh, go over that, uh, other than to say that we, uh, comport with the what, what, we comply with the policy by orders of magnitude. Thank you.
Any comments, questions on this?
No.
No.
And for, for the public watching, uh, if you are, uh, this is just a policy that we basically have enough cash flow in all of our funds that we don't get too low on anything, and that township is healthy financially. Moving on to item eleven F, policy governance two point seven, ends of focus of grants. Did I read that right?
There is a report on this that begins on page seventy-three. I'll read the policy quickly, the township manager may not enter in, or enter into any grants or contract arrangements that fail to emphasize the, primarily the production of ends, and secondarily, the avoidance of unacceptable means. Further, without limiting the foregoing, the manager shall not submit a Saginaw Chippewa and Indian Drive two percent grant application with prior, without prior approval by the board. My interpretation is that our contracts, our grants, everything we should be doing is to be focusing on our ends policies, number one through five. And if they aren't, whether it's applied for grants or not, or contracts, we shouldn't be worrying about it or doing it. There is, uh, bit of data that I think supports the fact that we are in compliance with the policy. I've listed several grants that we receive money on each year and what there's for. And I think it's obvious that they're applicable and, and are advancing the, the accomplishments of our, um, ends. There were, um, several grants that we were applied, that we applied for in twenty-three and were awarded in twenty-three. And these are all reimbursement grants, so we've not received any money yet from the grant, because we haven't had any expenses yet. And I listed those in the table under item number nine. So from my perspective, we're in compliance, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Clerk Cody?
I don't know what says manager getting grants, but, I mean, like, do I have to get permission when I'm trying to get grants for like election stuff and too? Like, I mean, is that different?
No, and I only have to get permission with this involving a two percent.
Okay.
To apply.
I'm grateful when you got those. Thank you.
I still love, I'm young.
You good?
Yeah.
Um, report was due in June, any issue with when it was given to us?
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, you read the interpretation, any, um, issue with the interpretation at all?
No.
Feel it's justified in-
Yep.
-what we've described as a policy? Do you feel that the interpretation addresses all aspects of the policy?
So.
Fairly sure.
Yes.
Yep.
And then, is there data showing compliance?
Yes.
Interpretation. So, uh, any language issues? It's really simple piece of policy. All good?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Moving on to item eleven H, policy governance three point six, supervisors' role in the board's process.
Three point five.
Did I miss one?
Three point five.
Thank you. Phew, I didn't want to do the other one anyways.
Don't worry.
I'm sorry. For the public, eleven G on the agenda, uh, policy governance three point five, board commission and community linkage. This is really in our wheelhouse. I'm assuming, do you have anything you want to say on this?
I do not.
Everybody's read through this?
Yes.
Yep.
Do you feel we're addressing this when we should?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Bear with me. And, uh, we're in compliance or not in compliance?
We're in compliance.
Yes.
I think we're in compliance as well. Um, if we're not, so no, nobody said we're not, correct?
Correct.
All right. Um, how do you think the board can improve the process to be in full compliance? Any comments? The only, the only thing I would add, um, and, and maybe this is, should go under item four, um, is when some of us can't make our liaison meetings, try to reach out to another board member to see if you can get coverage.
Yeah.
Because I, I know, uh, others would like the opportunity to go to those as well. So, for example, I'll pick on Trustee Smith for a minute. So if you're not able to make county commission one, it might be fun for somebody else to be able to have that participation.
Okay.
Clerk Cody?
It kind of reminds me, I need somebody to go to the road commission. Like, I can't, I got too much on my plate right now. There's only one meeting though, but-
A month now.
If somebody can do it, that would be great. I know Kim does it, but it's nice.
Let's try to address that the next meeting?
Yeah.
They have their meetings during the day.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can't do that.
What days do they have?
Thursdays. There's like at eight, eight or nine o'clock or something like that in the morning?
It's in the morning.
Eight or nine.
Yeah. I can't on Thursdays. If you would've said, you know, Monday or Wednesday, I would've been able to.
No, I don't get to pick the day or-
I know, I know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I was like, hey, maybe, no, I can't Thursdays.
But just think about it, if you can, you can. If not, I'll try.
When we get to, uh, boards and commissions, next meeting, let's try to help you out on that.
Yeah.
Okay. So think about if it works in your schedules and, so, any other issues? Good?
Good.
We'll skip H. Policy governance two point six, supervisors' role in the board's process. Uh, again, this is in our wheelhouse, this is section three of the policy governance. Uh, I'm assuming you've all read it. It's on page sixty-one is the actual policy, so is there any particular issue here or item that you feel we're not in strict compliance with?
I don't have a problem with none.
No issues.
As far as improvements to the policy, anything we need to do better, or I should do better?
Yeah, stop going to concerts and make every meeting.
And buying the trustees dinner once a month.
Yeah, that's right.
Just thinking.
Okay, just, just-
Outside the box.
I have thought about cooking, because cooking is one of my passions.
No, to answer your question, we're good. I'm good.
Yeah.
Ready to move on then?
Yep.
All right, so, uh, thank you. Policy governance three point seven, duties of elected department heads, this item I. Um, again, this, uh, clerk asked yesterday, I'm, I'm gonna bring this up. Um, asked yesterday, how come this is not done separately for the two offices? And I, my initial response was, well, because it's, this is the grouping of department heads, the supervisor is not a department head, but the other two officers of the board are. But certainly, if we decided in the future that we wanted to separate it, certainly could do that, they are separate sections within the policy. Mostly. Anyways, um, you've read through those, I hope. Any issues with compliance on this?
We're in compliance.
We're good, yeah, I don't see any at all, no.
Anything that should be improved upon, any additional language changes or anything like that?
I think I'm doing a great job.
I think you're doing great. So-
So hilarious.
I told you I was gonna say, hey-
I like the self-evaluation.
So, as for me, you know, if this would've been a couple weeks ago, I would've been great. Um, you know, there was an issue, um, that came up that I don't think I handled correctly. And, um, you know, there was a payroll that even though we got a confirmation on, it didn't get submitted in time. And so I think I need to improve on that, so. I feel like I failed on that, so. That's, but the clerk does great.
I'm not gonna pick out all the little mistakes, you know, come on.
I know, but-
But overall.
It's something I can improve on, making sure that, you know, Juneteenth is on the radar for holidays and stuff, so.
If you give me my tax bill late, I'd be okay with that.
Yeah. How about a day? I'll, I'll, um, Savior's a day late, how about that?
Oh, yeah, I know it's coming either way. Still the same due date, right?
Um, actually, no. It is the sixteenth, not the fourteenth.
No, but I mean, it's, regardless if I'm one day late in the mail.
Gotcha. So.
So, any-
So you do get two extra days to pay it.
That's nice.
There you go.
But no issues as far as language change suggestions or anything?
No. No.
So I'm gonna move on then, unless there's objection. This is, uh, eleven J, uh, clerk pay discussion. Um, just quick history, we've been discussing this, well, technically, we've been discussing this prior to this board, starting in sixteen. Try, at that time, the trustees were given pay raises, and it was understood that, uh, the clerk office would be looked at then. For whatever reason, it was never dealt with, um, even through the wage studies that were, wage study that was done. We had a lot of discussions aboard last year, the end result of that was we asked for a wage study to be done. So that we can get a better feeling for what is proper compensation with the changes in the law for the clerk's office. Uh, turns out, we're not the only one in that boat, surprise. So what that means is, um, most municipalities are asking the exact same question. And so, uh, having a discussion with our manager, and you can jump in if you feel I misrepresent or missed something that's important. Uh, having a conversation with our manager, he took our directive, tried to reach out, well, did reach out to a third party uh, that did the wage study, I believe, last time. With the discussion being, looking at, uh, wage study for department heads and for the clerk's position. And the response from this individual was you're not gonna get good data from the clerk wage study at this point, because everybody's trying to figure it out, you need to wait a little bit longer before you'll have that data. So as I understand it, from our manager, and this, I really need your help if I'm wrong, is that we're likely to see data hopefully, either end of the year or bef- before mid-year next year, was what he was kind of recommending. Um, and so in that absence of having the data that we had asked for, my personal feeling was that it's unfair to continue to, uh, at, at least in my view, underpay the clerk's position. And so that I asked for this to be brought back, one, so you can be aware of the situation that what we'd asked to be executed, the consultant was recommending we delay the wage study. And two, I just, I, I wanted to bring- And two, I just, I wanted to bring it back to the board, so. That's why it's on the agenda today. So I, go ahead, you have something?
Um, yeah, so, I I know we all received a letter from the clerk, the county clerk. And that in favor of Lisa. And so I personally would like to see us increase the salary for the clerk. So, I'm actually going to make a motion that we increase the salary of the clerk by seven thousand effective date one one twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Okay.
Motion by Rice, support by Bills?
Yep.
Yes?
You know, we've, we've been told many times how amazing our clerk is.
By many different people.
By, exactly, by many people. The county has numerous times, you know, praised Lisa. They go to Lisa for information as well. I mean, even in here, oh, where was it? I'm quoting what she's writing here, "We finally have a top-notch clerk in Union Township." You know, it, she has gone above and beyond, and I think she needs to be compensated for that. She, I, I mean, I have a team, she has her and her deputy. And yes, she has other individuals that help as well, but I just, I, I think that she does an amazing job and we, we need to step up.
Trustee Smith?
A quick question, just want to make sure that this isn't a permanent increase to the wage, it's not a one-time bonus like we did last year.
Correct.
Okay.
And I would like to add, if you're finished.
Trustee Bills?
I would like to add that you're absolutely right, a lot of the clerk positions are in flux right now because they're not getting paid enough. And if Clerk Cody quit, we'd have a hole to fill. And it wouldn't be pretty, because you can't just all of a sudden be qualified for the job she does. So, you know, I think seven thousand is very perfect bar to set it at right now for the raise. And I think that we might have to reevaluate that once we get our wage study.
Agreed.
And that wouldn't be me, because I'm not going to be here next year, but you guys.
Agreed.
I knew that one, thank you for the comment, but when Manager Stuldryer told me we're not going to get this data for a little while, I'm like, wow. One, I articulated this, I didn't think it was fair to continue to drag this out, but two.
Thank you.
Once we get the data, I'd certainly want to look at that and but it's not the clerk's fault, nor is it, should we punish her for, because we don't have good information? We know the job has changed dramatically. Just for the record, too, we've had several meetings with the manager and the clerk, looking at how to assist the clerk using the staff that's in the office. So, there are people, and I think you mentioned this, there are people that step up and help the clerk's office. But the changes are such that that only helps a little bit.
Yeah.
And still the, the demand on you has increased dramatically.
One last thing, I just want to comment, it's not only just the time she puts in, but it's, a lot of wages reflect time, but also the responsibility.
Absolutely.
The responsibility that she has now from the state, and if she makes a mistake, it's bad. You know, so you're not only paying for the time, but you're also paying on the amount of responsibility she has.
And experience.
Absolutely, absolutely. I feel very comfortable at the seven thousand here now. I believe with the tremendous job that you do do, that we will be back to take another look at this, once we get this wage study. I believe that's the minimum at this point. I think we're going to have to look at it again, I really believe so, with, what, you know, what the wage studies are going to come back at, what, you know, what you guys are going through and the changes in the state. I'm very comfortable with the seven thousand. I have no problem with that.
I'll state, I'm, I'm comfortable with it too. I do just want to point out, once you raise the salary of a public official, it is very difficult to roll it back. And the reason for that is it takes that particular official in that cycle to agree to that pay cut. So if we get a wage study that says the clerk should only be getting five thousand dollars a year, which I know it's not going to say that. But if it were to say that, we, we have put ourselves in a position where we'd have to ask the clerk if we wanted to try to adjust it down, because they have, the officer that you're trying to decrease pay on, and I don't think this is going to happen. Or I wouldn't be comfortable with the seven. But if that were to happen, that officer has full veto over it, is what I understand the law.
And my personal opinion on that one is, I would gladly take that for the clerk we have. Even if it came back five thousand and we're going to pay her seven thousand on top of it, we've got a pretty good clerk.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're going to find an issue with that, I just wanted to point that out, because.
I just want to tell you too, that you're not going to get any applicants that want to run for that spot without some more money. It, it's a lot of responsibility, there's a lot of elections, there's frivolous elections and other elections, but it just, it's a lot with the nine days. It is.
And we all see what the current annual salary is now. So.
And this year it's twenty-seven days of early voting.
Exactly.
We had actually said we would have this discussion prior to now, so it's, I'm glad we're.
It's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
Yep. And I know Trustee Thering and I, a year and a half ago began, you started looking at other municipalities, but again, the data, we just didn't know.
Long overdue.
Is there more discussion on this? This is a resolution kind of vote. And I guess we have a resolution, and the motion you made, just so I'm clear, is effective one one twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
An increase of seven thousand to the annual salary, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was, yes.
I, I think the motion ought to be, you, you should reference the title of this resolution, because what you're, you need to adopt a resolution that sets the pay.
Sorry, I didn't even look at that page. Sorry.
Since we're talking on this, can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Why are we waiting till one one?
One one twenty-four, so backdating.
Oh!
Because when we.
Okay, I thought.
You've already had one election this year?
We're a little late in our conversation.
I see you read this.
Yes.
Yeah, hello.
I got ahead of myself there, I'm sorry. Okay, twenty-four, that makes sense.
Are you wanting to amend your motion then?
Yes, so.
Ma'am?
Go ahead.
All you'd really need to do is, I move to approve resolute, charter township of Union, Isabella County, Michigan, resolution to establish charter township of Union clerk salary at twenty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. And if you do that, everything in this resolution is approved.
So moved.
Also acknowledges that, and the board needs to be aware of this, there is a thirty-day, I think it's thirty days, referendum period. This is public, it's a resolution, that's why they do it, why the state law is written this way. So, board approves it, will effectuate it after the expiration of that thirty-day referendum period. Just so y'all know that there's a referendum period that does exist. It's in the second or the third whereas of the resolution that was on your desk tonight.
Yep, and so moved as stated.
Trustee Bills, do you accept the amended motion?
Second.
More discussion? For the record, we, we've had this discussion before, and this is for the clerk's office, despite the fact that we've called your name, it really is for the clerk's office.
Correct.
And we've stated in the past that you should not abstain.
Correct.
Is there any issue with that?
No issue.
That, I only stated that because that was kind of passed as we did the bonuses for last year. Any other? Would you do a roll call of the motion then?
Supervisor Milkie?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, thanks for your great work.
No, thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving on, thank you, board. Lisa, I'm sorry, trustee, I'm sorry, Clerk Cody, sorry. Sorry it took us so long to get here. Takes us to item twelve on the agenda, extended public comment. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And do we have anybody connected remotely? And we'll open up extended public comment at nine fifteen PM. Let the record show, no one came forward, including Commissioner Engler, so we'll close extended public comment at nine sixteen PM. Mr. Stuldryer, that brings us to item thirteen on the agenda, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just to let the board know, I will be out of the office next week. I'll just be a couple hours north, but I will be out all week. I'm not naming an acting township manager. I'll be available via cell and computer. And I wish everybody a happy Fourth of July.
See you.
Happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Any questions for our manager?
No.
Moving on then, final board member comment, item fourteen on the agenda, Trustee Brown?
Have a happy Fourth, enjoy your week.
Thank you.
You deserve it.
Same here, same here. And my sunflowers are blooming.
Awesome.
I have one, I have one.
He's got one.
Clerk Cody?
Happy Fourth.
I think I've said enough today.
I know it's been a long meeting, but there is one, one story I need to share. I got a call late Friday, I won't mention the resident's name, lives on the O'Connor neighborhood off of Crawford up there. Apparently there, as I understand it, there was a leak, and it sounded like maybe it was a connection to the main line for water that sprung a leak. And the leak was taken care of, and as a result of that, having to dig up the pipe and repair it, you know, the grass gets damaged, right, and you backfill it with dirt, et cetera. So this gentleman called and he just said, I just want to find out what the plan is regarding getting like grass seed or how is this going to be remediated and when. I was not available at the time, so I ended up calling him back, and he says, oh, thanks for calling me back. He says, I already got my answer, I talked to Jennifer, and they're going to wait till after the Fourth. He goes, don't get me wrong, that's the right call, and he said, the reason they're waiting till after the Fourth to seed it is because they want to see if it settles and does more dirt need to be brought in. He says, plus I'm going to be on vacation that week, so that works out perfect, I don't say it, but he says, I just have to tell you though, when the leak happened, the response time was amazing, he said, the staff that came out, they were extremely professional. I went out and talked to them, I'm amazed at the people that work for Union Township. And then, to have the response from the organization, the executive side, get back to me and get me the responses that I needed as far as remediation schedule. He says, I'm just so tickled with how great Union Township is. So I had to share that. And I had shared this with Mark prior in a meeting, and I believe he was going to share that with some of the staff that were involved.
And I have, thank you.
A good story. Happy Fourth, motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Rice? Motion by Rice, oh, it's late. Motion by Rice, support by Smith. Any objections? All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned at nine nineteen PM.